Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present with councilors Daniel and Carson previously requesting to be excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next we have the agenda approval. Counselor V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda excusing Ms. Daniel and Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the section of the council meeting where we will allow citizens who filled out these comment cards to come up to the podium or to the mic, and we ask that you make your comments within three minutes. If you are still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your conversation at that time and ask you to have a seat. So we just ask that you be mindful with the three-minute rule. Okay? The first card I have is Lee Cockrum.
I'm not really here tonight to comment on the pros or cons of the trail. I do believe the city council hasn't listened to the majority of the people. I've just a rough calculation of my own. I think about eighty percent of the people were opposed, twenty percent were in favor of, and those that were opposed to it are all indigenous people. We've been here forever. This has been our home forever, and so on. That's all I'm going to say on that. But I am very concerned about the fire potential down there when this trail opens up. You know, I was just talking to the fire chief chapman there. You know, if a kid had set off a pop bottle rocket, boom, that thing could go. The grass and stuff, there's several years built up there. The city or somebody has went down there and sprayed those Russian olive trees to destroy them. I don't know, but they're all dying along there, and they've flourished for years. All they've done by doing that is put in more combustible material. If those trees would catch fire there, wow. And that's not easily accessible. That's like sulfur bottom down in there. It's like oil pits and stuff. It's really nasty down in those trees. I'm, I go down in there with my dogs and stuff, but anyway, I think that needs to be concern, one of the concerns. I think something needs maybe like a control burn down there to get rid of the grass and stuff. That, that would help a lot. And you know, like, right there next to the junkyard, I've been told if a car catches fire, it's hard to put out. The chief just told me, says, "It's not that bad because we've got foam and everything." I said, "Yeah, that, you're talking about one car. I'm talking about 500 cars." So I, you know, this fire thing really needs to be addressed whether we have a trail or not. If people are going to go down in there, the fire potential's greater. So I, I would definitely like the city to consider a control burn, I think would, would help. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have J.J. Hostetter.
Back again. Kind of looking for my little fancy name tag. I would think by now I would have one. But a couple of things from the last meeting that I didn't get a comment on, so I had to wait, is social equality. And I see what you're trying to do, and I don't, I hope it doesn't come across that we're fighting that. We realize where the trails are, and to, to look at our area and try to improve it is something that is not what we're opposing. But, and it seems to be a big deal, so I would ask, would somebody please call Home Depot and tell them to build us a store? It's not fair that they're everywhere else and we don't have one. But I think that their response would be, they'll build them where there's people that will use them to ensure their success, so that, you know, they don't build something that doesn't work. And that's, I think, been our whole thing this whole time, is that there's areas that have trails and it's not been a problem. But what did the area look like prior to that? The theft and stuff that we've talked about has been kind of, I don't know, it, it doesn't, it's been made, said that the trail, you know, is not going to make that any worse. But we've got police reports. I even have pictures of footprints coming through the west side ditch headed to my garage. Two people on Eleventh called the police and saw the guy with my rifles, and I still didn't get my rifles back. They knew exactly what unit the guy went into. I called the county, and I think there was a lapse between county and city as far as where the rifles. I think if it would have been put together, I would have got my rifles, and I didn't. So it's not speculation. It's something that we have dealt with, and the west side ditch has protected that, so opening it up is going to make it a lot worse. The fencing deal is, I think, a big deal, and it's in our best interest and yours also if you're putting the people back there and the potential of getting harmed going in and jumping on cars or whatever. And I know it doesn't seem like that's something that will, that you think could happen, but it does, and it has been. The cost, you know, to, to get this for the city with no expense is a great thing, and nobody believes it can be done for the 50,000. So if it takes city funds to get a bridge and a concrete and everything over that ditch, what benefit or what percent of the population are we serving? And what percent would actually drive over there to use it? The trail, when the donor was approached about this, I wonder if you guys know who approached her about it and where she was walked? She wanted to connect the city, and this doesn't do this. She was walked up here, so if we could make it to where, dang, I'm out of time. That's what she asked for, and I'm not saying she disapproves of it over here, but it's not what the goal was. It's not what the city, the original plan was. So I have another plan, but I'm out of time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Up next, we have Olivia and Shannon Hostetter.
So I'm not here to talk about all the pros and cons of the trail, but I think that, like, because as my dad just said, that Linda mom wa, like, wanted to connect the city, that, I mean, I really like trails, and I think that this is a good idea. The location is, I don't know, I wouldn't say it's the very best, but, so I was thinking maybe instead of putting all that money and effort out to, like, the trail back on the south side, that maybe some upkeep to Cole Park, because that's, it's a really nice park, and me and my mom would go out and we would bicycle out there and, and ju, just go by the river. So I think that, like, maybe some upkeep for that, and we can make, like, a pavilion and just, like, get new restrooms and new equipment for, like, the kids and stuff, that that could work and bring a lot of people and improve, like, just things on the south And we've walked back there before, and I know that you guys have too, and you haven't seen a lot of the trash and the stuff that we were concerned about, and that's because that we have actually gone back there and picked up some stuff, like needles and just cigarette butts and stuff. And so we've kind of picked that stuff up, so it's not as bad as it used to be, but also that, like... So just I think that, I mean, that we would want to connect the city, so I think that, like, this trail isn't very bad, but maybe upkeep some trails inside the city just to improve it, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, like Olivia said, we're not against trails. We love the trails. We use the trails. We are not against anything like that. It's just maybe I would ask to reconsider where it goes, is all. And I know, Heather, I know you're listening because I, I drove by the, I drive by the recycle center, and it's clean. I appreciate that. Thank you. I really do. It's nice to see. We would also like to offer to buy that property. Well, we'll match the, what the donor is. Maybe if that, if you guys would consider that. Again, we're not against trails. We're not against anything like that. We really enjoy the outdoors. We think it's beautiful, and we, we really appreciate the fact that you guys want to improve. We really do. It's just kind of the position of the trail. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is the part of the agenda where we'll turn it back over to our city manager and city attorney for follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, just a minute. That sounds a little loud. I think we turned it up for the speakers. I wanted to address some of the items that were brought up. I apologize because I'm not, I'm not sure how I can better communicate in regards to the fire concerns to, so I'm, I don't know if this is going to be worded exactly the same way, or if I can do a better job of communicating this. The city is definitely hearing the concerns related to fire, and the fire chief is going to be evaluating the area as well as other city property and making recommendations on if we need to do anything. And whatever those recommendations are, is what we're going to do. And so I, I, I don't, I don't know how much more clear to, to be that we are hearing it, we are taking it seriously. We are going to have experts take a look at the situation, make recommendations. I don't know if his recommendation would be a control burn or not. That's something that's his prerogative as the fire chief, or if, if there's other prescriptions or prescriptive activity he would have in order to, to address some of the issues. And so just because something has not happened yet does not mean we are not listening and not going to take any action that needs to happen in order to make it a safe environment from a fire perspective. In regards to the cost and the donor and what the donor wanted, I, I think there's some potential confusion there. I know from meeting the donor and talking directly with the donor and walking the trail with the donor, and those conversations, when she was here the first time, yes, she was brought on some of these trails, but she was also brought to that area as well, not necessarily that first time to walk the whole thing because access was a little limited at that point in time. But since then, she has walked the entire trail. She's extremely excited about the trail. This is the trail that she wants to fund. She was not interested in funding any of the trails within the city limits or the other parts of the city limits and, and those types of things. When she was working with SLV Go, her goal was social equity and connectivity for areas that may not have it. So she and SLV Go actually identified two projects in the valley, one of which was this one, and the other one, which was up near towards Crest Stone. So I, I think there's some confusion there. I can tell you that her funding, what she's excited about is not only just from the neighborhoods that this provides connectivity for, but she's extremely focused on the connection to the refuge and that type of partnership that exists and enhancing that and, and getting people access onto the refuge and working with Suzanne and all of those types of things. And so she's extremely focused on that and, and very excited. So she's walked the entire thing recently and has nothing but excitement for that. She would not, it's not a matter of us being able to shift money to, to other priorities. This is, the money goes away type of situation. The other part is this cost and, and those types of things. When we started this project, the donation in and of itself was going to be enough to, to cover it, but when we heard concerns related from the neighborhood, we felt some of them are very, very valid, and we needed to take them seriously. And so, for example, one of the concerns was with the parking lot. If it's not lit, could there be people that are going to go park there and do certain things? So we are going to look at putting a light that focuses down so we don't create too much light pollution, but at the same time, take that into consideration. So that might be an extra thousand or two, depending on the final design of that. The ditch company had very, very valid concerns in regards to using the culverts and what that does related to the beaver activity and how much we'd have to be down there cleaning it out and those types of things. So the culverts were budgeted for approximately 25,000 based on the feedback from the ditch and, and agreeing that long-term, a bridge, that a pedestrian bridge with rails would be safer and require less maintenance due to the beavers and those types of things, and to meet the ditch's concerns related to all of those things, we're looking at a pedestrian bridge, which is, which is going to be about 34,000. So there is a bit of an increase there. But these are very proper changes to, to enable this project to, to move forward and be responsive to the concerns that, that we were hearing. We've already covered the design changes that, that we've made to the trail in relation to the concerns about habitat and how closely it's approaching private property and, and those types of things. Andy and Suzanne collaboratively have identified other grant resources that can't be used anywhere else in town that can cover these other costs. So we're still able to keep this kind of as originally presented to council and still be able to be responsive to the, the comments that we were hearing from the neighborhood. I also want to share, you know, this, this discussion of a majority not being in favor of it. It's, it's a concept that I've tried communicating with J.J. before, is this trail's not just for those people who are living on South River Road. This trail is for all of Alamosa, but also at least half of Alamosa in that vicinity. So we're talking 5,000 people, and, and this is in line with the, the comprehensive plan, which overwhelmingly trails was number one in enhancing trails and access to trails and, and those types of things in the comprehensive plan. And so this isn't something that is just for those residents on South River Road, and I think that can create a difference of opinion on is there a majority against it or not when, depending on how you're defining that. And so I want to, I want to provide some clarification there. Finally, a little bit off-topic, but back on the, the item of the recycling center. Last time we had mentioned we had applied for a grant for a storage shelter so we could get some of that indoors, and we'd have less blowing debris and, and that kind of stuff. We found out last week that we did not get the grant. We were able to get some feedback, though, and we were really close. There's a few little modifications we need to make, and we can reapply, and we feel pretty confident about that. But I did want to update council on, on that, those efforts related to the recycling and, and the trash and, and hearing those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I had a question, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Heather, a question on the donor. Did we approach the donor, or did she approach us? How did that work?
My understanding, and I wasn't part of that, so the, what I have in my mind is that somehow she became aware of SLV Go and that she contacted SLV Go. So SLV Go's been a critical partner in facilitating this relationship, so that's, but if it wasn't that way, then somehow SLV Go found out about her and contacted her, but I believe it's the other way, but it...
Because that was one, one of the questions out there that, that we had approached, I think, and it's, it...
I don't know what the point is.
I didn't understand, I didn't understand that part, yeah.
I don't know, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Up next on the agenda is ceremonial items. This is the part of the agenda to where we will read some proclamations. We have three of them tonight, and usually I ask different council members to help out with reading the proclamations, and tonight, we have Counselor Griegego and Counselor Brawls who will be helping out with reading the proclamation. The first proclamation is the National Skilled Nursing Week proclamation, and Counselor Griegego's going to read that in a few minutes, but if we could have Erica and any of your team come up into the podium and just tell us a little bit about what's been going on with your organization.
So I'm Erica Lou Sprock. I represent San Luis Care Center and Evergreen Nursing Home here in Alamosa. We are owned and operated by Life Care Centers of America. We are very, very proud that this is our, we call it Nursing Home Week, but it's changed now to National Skilled Nursing Week, and it's basically a week-long party. Every day, we have a theme. Today was Country Day. Today was Country Western Day, so we did a cookout. We had really good food and lots of games, and we just celebrate what it is that we do. We celebrate our staff and we celebrate our residents. We're really proud of what we are able to offer. Evergreen still is continuing to boast a deficiency-free survey. We're very, very proud of that. They're one of less than 27 nursing homes in Colorado we're able to achieve deficiency-free. We basically, we, we scored 100% on our public health survey, which is very difficult to do. So we're really proud of that, and we're going to tout that as long as we possibly can. We have with us tonight, we've got a couple of our residents, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Tensick, and Ms., oh my gosh, Linda Barrier, Ms. Barrier, and then we also have with us Maria Quintana, our Activities Director. We are led by Kara Finger, our Administrator, and Ramona Dutton, our Director of Nursing, and we are kept together in medical records by Jennifer Carr. And Dominic is in the back, and he drives us wherever we need to go. San Luis Care Center also wished to be here tonight, but they had a conflict, and so we weren't able to get them out of the house. Right now, the big argument is the staff are trying to get home and get to bed, and the residents are enjoying this and they want to stay up.
Okay, good.
So, so we'd like to, we'd like to say thank you for honoring us. We're really proud of what we do. We have about 150 to 175 staff between the two buildings. We currently have about 100 residents between the two buildings, and we're here and ready to help whenever we need. Both facilities participated today in a mock disaster drill with the EOC, and it was pretty, it was pretty enlightening, and we're really proud to say that we're really well-prepared. So, so thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, too. And I remember when I first came to Alamosa, Evergreen Nursing Home was the first place I was able to go and volunteer, and Maria did a great job. She's the Activities Director there, and I was in charge of bingo night. It was so fun. But thank you for giving me that opportunity so many years ago, and thank you all for all the wonderful work you do at Evergreen and also at the other places as well, okay? All right. Counselor Griegego.
Okay. Before I even read this proclamation, I thank you, Mayor, for letting me in and allowing me to do this, but the, the stuff that Erica and them do down there, I have a sister that's in a nursing home, and they're, they are angels because of what they go through and stuff, but they treat the people so great, you know, and, oh, it's, it's just amazing. Just, there's times I've sat there and, and watched, you know, because it's, it's a hardship and, and it's a hardship for a person, you know, to have a person in there, but they make life enjoyable and they try everything they can to make that person feel comfortable and stuff. So I, I really appreciate what you guys do, and I, I, there's not words, I guess, to, but to, to thank you guys for that, so. With that, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation of Nurse, of National Skilled Nursing Week, May 12th through 18th, 2019, the City of Alamosa, Colorado. Whereas skilled nursing and rehabilitation centers in Alamosa, Colorado, and around the country provide health care to citizens with a wide variety of health care needs, and whereas the citizens have spent many years of their lives building our community and country into what it is, and whereas the American Health Care Association is celebrating National Skilled Nursing Week in skilled nursing and rehab centers across the country from Mother's Day, May 12th, through Saturday, May 18th, 2019, with the theme "Live Soulfully", and whereas residents and outpatients at the center, as well as the staff serving them, deserve recognition for their contributions. Now, now therefore, I, Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, on behalf of the entire city council, encourage every citizen of our community to honor and serve their, the residents and patients of skilled nursing and rehab centers by visiting or volunteering at local nursing homes to bring good cheers to residents and appreciate to the staff who care for them, most valuable citizens of our on behalf. And that's true, if you could go down there and then visit and stuff, that, that would, those people would love it, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, council, well, we'll go down here, we'll present this to you all, and take picture.
Here you go. We're going to put you right in front. There you go. Front and center, John. Okay. Linda, right next to John, okay? Okay. Oops, watch your toes. Watch your toes. Try and keep all ten. Yep. Here, John, can you hold this for me? Look, let me show you what it is first. It's the proclamation. Okay. So the mayor just signed that for us. You're going to have to look, look above it, though. We don't want you to hide your face. Okay. I'll stand, I'll stand. All right. Is everyone ready? One, two, three. There you go. Okay. Okay, good job, John. Thank you. We couldn't have done that without you. All right. Here we go.
Mayor, did they get this without sort?
Yep, that one's mine, too. I know, I left all my stuff laying all over the place.
Thank you so much.
See you later. Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you for reading that proclamation, Counselor Griegego.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Up next, we have National Public Works Week. We have a proclamation that will be read by Counselor Brawls. Do we have anyone here representing public works tonight? Okay, Harry?
If we're having a competition between public works and police, I think we know who's winning tonight.
Oh, yeah, we can see that.
I'm just going to point that out.
All righty.
I just want to, I just want to say that we greatly appreciate those people working public works because without public works, you don't have a city. And so, I mean, it takes a lot to run a city, and public works, works is a key ingredient to that, so I appreciate the opportunity to read this proclamation. National Public Works Week, proclamation, May 19th to May 25th, 2019. It starts here. Whereas public works professional focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, importance to the sustain, to the sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Alamosa. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services can only be provided without, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public work professional, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structured facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Alamosa to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of, of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Yet now resolved, Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, on behalf of the city council, the entire city council, do hereby designate the week, May 19th... understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, on behalf of the city council, entire city council, do hereby designate the week, May 19th to the May 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of Alamosa. Further, Mayor Coleman urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Harry, did you want to say anything, you know?
Well, I'll be quite honest. It just kind of snuck up on me. I didn't realize we were doing this tonight. But we certainly appreciate Council's support, leadership. Certainly couldn't do that without your direction. We have a great staff, you know? The guys out in the field, they're very humble. They're asked to do some tough and not-so-favorable jobs, do a great job for the city, you know? They're great leaders, and we appreciate them very much.
Thank you, Harry. Any other counsel, any comments?
I'd just like to point out, a lot of times, people don't even realize everything that's being done behind the scenes for public works unless it's not working. And then that's usually when it becomes an issue. So, there is a lot of humbleness, there is a lot of behind-the-scenes, but it's critical infrastructure, and it's critical work. And we've got some amazing staff.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Counselor Hanson?
I'll just add a little bit, that I think especially this year, this last six months even, it shows the depth that we have also in public works. Obviously, some of the changes that have gone on and how it has still been very strong. And Harry, you've been a lot of why that's happened, but I also know it's the people behind you as well. And so, really proud that we have that depth. And a lot of the people that work in public works, they've been there a long time. When I go to the different anniversaries of people that have been here X amount of years, it tends to be a lot of people from public works. So, just thank you for all you do.
And Harry, I remember when I first became a council member in the Public Works Department, they, you know, brag a lot. They were just like, "We are the heartbeat of the city. I can see why you all are the heartbeat of the city with all the hard work and dedication you put into your job, so thank you and keep up the great work." Okay? All right, let's go down and take picture. Okay, up next, Police Week proclamation. Several of us had an opportunity earlier to go and celebrate the police memorial ceremony earlier, and I'm so glad to see our law enforcement officers who are here. Chief, you going to come up to the podium? Did you want to say a few words, and then I'll read the proclamation?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I was actually going to talk after you.
Okay, you can do that if you want.
You know, if I'm already talking, I might as well just get it over with.
Okay, all right. Good.
Mayor and council, I really appreciate the support you guys have always shown us throughout my entire career. You know, like Harry just said, without you guys being the role models we have, I don't know what we'd have, you know? And I've got a great boss. She does a lot for us as well. So, we really do appreciate the city and what they do for us. Because the job we do, as you're very much aware, I mean, this is to honor the fallen officers, you know, this entire week. It's an honorable profession. It's just, it's something you've got to be prideful in. And I think each and every one of our officers are passionate about this job. So, thank you, guys. I'll let you read your part now. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief, and thank you for a good job you did earlier today. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May the 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement and the Alamosa Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Alamosa. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the City of Alamosa Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which provides a vital public service. And whereas I, City of Alamosa Mayor, Ty Coleman, call upon all citizens of Alamosa and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13, 2019, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of the people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in doing so, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Alamosa to observe Wednesday, May the 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now, I therefore, Ty Coleman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Alamosa, do hereby honor law enforcement officers across the country and the Alamosa Police Department, and proudly proclaim the week of May 13, 2019, as Police Week, and May the 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Thank you all. Okay? So, we're going to come down and present this to you all.
I think this is a photo opportunity for everyone in uniform.
Okay, Counsel, up next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A. Counselor Beehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay? Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have Regular Business brought forward by city staff, the first item under D1, the first reading of ordinance number 14-2019. That be you, Eric?
It is. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
This matter is before you, Counsel, because as we mentioned, back when you adopted the new Uniform Development Code in January of 2018, we needed some experiential work with it in order to get a feel for how it worked and the various intricacies of it. It's a very, as you know, long and involved code. One of the things that we have discovered is that the code categorizes marijuana paraphernalia stores as a type-two retail outlet. And type-two retail outlets are, there are examples that are given in the code, tattoo parlors, consignment shops, secondhand stores. The code is structured such that in the downtown area, those are not allowed, and in the commercial business areas, those are only allowed if they're 600 feet or more from each other on the same street. So, it's an attempt to avoid a concentration of type-two type retail. The code treats sexually-oriented businesses differently and prohibits those from being within 200 feet of US Highway 285 or US Highway 160, the two main corridors through Alamosa. And it occurred to your planning director, as he was reviewing another application, that that's Pat Steenberger I'm talking about, the interim planning director, who was intimately involved in the drafting of the UDC, that that's not his recollection of how he thinks the plan for Alamosa ought to go. So, the purpose of this moratorium is to make sure that no marijuana paraphernalia stores go in along those corridors while you have a chance, as counsel, to consider what you intended the code to do with respect to those issues. This is a temporary moratorium that will expire on August 31st. So, between now and August 31st, the idea is that we'll have a work session and go through the UDC and its implications with respect to that.
And I do believe we already have a work session scheduled for that. So, again, as Eric has indicated, this is to move quickly. We're not trying to prevent business, especially if the code is written the way counsel wants it to be. But we want to make sure you have an opportunity to have a full discussion on that, rather than just assuming.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Beehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, can you please clear up what you just said about Pat not thinking or intending what the plan was? What did you mean by that?
Well, so, Pat was concerned that there may be an application for a marijuana paraphernalia store in the works, and he and I talked about it, and he thought that he could put limitations on it that might prevent it from going on those corridors. And I said, "No, Pat, my reading of the code is, as long as a type-two retail outlet is 600 feet from another one, it can go in anywhere, so long as it's 600 feet away, except for the downtown area." And he didn't think that was right, and we had some email exchanges about my narrow interpretation of the law, but I believe that's the way the code's written. So, that's what, he didn't think that should be a result, given the city's comprehensive plan and downtown design kind of plan that you're going through right now. He did not think that was appropriate.
Okay. And then, could you, in your council communication, you talk about sexually-oriented business. Can you explain that a little bit more, and why a marijuana paraphernalia store would fall under that?
It wouldn't.
It doesn't?
No. I'm just saying that you do treat sexually-oriented businesses differently from type-two retail. So, they're their own...
Other type-two.
Other type-two. They are not a type-two retail. They are their own thing. And the only reason I mentioned that was because you did, with respect to sexually-oriented businesses, you did pre-create a protective bubble around the US highway corridors. And the question is whether a similar protective bubble for paraphernalia stores, or indeed any type-two retail, however you want to do that.
Don't we have a, sorry, Heather, don't we have a store in Alamosa that sells marijuana paraphernalia?
I believe we do.
And isn't it on 160?
It could well be, but it predates the code.
Okay. Thank you.
It would be grandfathered in.
And Counselor Beehill, I want to make it clear, too. When it comes to the work session, staff does not necessarily have a strong opinion on if the marijuana paraphernalia should be allowed on those corridors. What we feel, though, is that is something you guys need to discuss, and that is a political question. And so, we are just trying to give you a timeframe to where you can have that discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Greigel?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, the first reading. We pass ordinance number 14. It's headed for a public hearing on June the 5th at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
Okay, I have a motion?
First reading.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Greigel. Okay. Up next, we have IT, first reading of ordinance number 13-2019, the renewal of the IGA with the City of Bonavista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. For the last three years, the, sorry, my notes here flipped on me. For the last three years, IT has been providing services to the City of Bonavista under an IGA. That joint model extends, it extends all our services to them. In return for that joint agreement, the monies that they paid to the City of Alamosa help fund our additional IT in our department. With the joint service model in place, participating agencies receive cost savings in personnel, software, hardware, training over the expenses of individual IT teams. They also, we also benefit from a diversity that, in the skill set, that we may not necessarily be able to afford individually. Currently, the City of Bonavista pays the City of Alamosa $52,996 a year. This new IGA is identical, the renewal is identical, with a $5,000 a year increase to help cover some of the cost increases we've had over the last three years. So, our recommendation is for you to authorize staff, or to authorize the city manager to execute the IGA with the City of Bonavista for the provision of information technology services.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jim. Okay, Counselor Beehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, just a quick question. I know that we came into this IGA three years ago because Bonavista was needing some major help.
Yes.
Are they doing better now?
Much better. They've had no intrusions into their network in the last three years since we moved in there.
Thank you, Jim. I just want to thank you and your team for helping out a local neighbor and bringing them up to par. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 13-2019, renewing the IGA with Bonavista for the provision of IT services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just have a comment. Jim, I've heard nothing but good things about the relationship and the collaboration with Bonavista and the City of Alamosa. I'm so thankful for all the work that you and your team are doing, and just keep up the great work. But a lot of positive feedback from Bonavista, from not only elected officials, but other people who work in the organization.
Thank you.
And that's really important.
Mayor, this is a first reading, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Did we get the motion right? Okay?
Thanks for reading.
Go ahead.
So, I'd like to amend my motion and now say, approve on first reading, number 13-2019, and set it for a public hearing on June 5th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay. Please start voting. Ms. Holliday?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay? All right. Seeing that we have no committee reports, next, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, Dawn, if you want to...
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, Dawn, if you want to make your way up, we're just going to do a brief update on the winter runoff and the snowpack and some of the efforts we're doing just to monitor that and what our feelings are in relation to those.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Just kind of an update on what's going on with the river. We've been, of course, watching the water levels kind of up and down depending on the temperatures. We're going to see a pretty good spike in the water level here, probably in the next 24 to 48 hours, just because of the warm weather we're seeing right now. We are expected to see some cooler weather starting tomorrow through the weekend and on into next week. But along with that's going to come some moisture, especially up in the mountains. We've looked at the dykes. Eric can probably give you an update in a minute on some repairs that were made on where Beaver Dam was located. So I'm going to throw him under the bus and make him come up here, too. And we're watching the levels and probably when it, if it gets up to about our 1,500 CFS level, we'll start patrolling the dykes. In meetings yesterday, the Army Corps of Engineers feel like the city itself is in good shape throughout the city limits and everything. There's probably going to be some issues on the southeast side of Alamo, like east Alamosa, and then on out south on the south end. They are concerned about some areas between the 103 and the 107 on the west end of the county out there, as far as some bank erosion and stuff like that. But as far as the city, they even feel like the city's in pretty good shape. But as a precaution, we'll start, our agency will start watching the dykes pretty close. So that's kind of what I've got on that.
I thought Dawn was going to do all the heavy lifting. But so last week, or last Friday, I guess it was, it was brought to our attention that we had a Beaver Dam where they kind of dug into the toe of the levee just north of the State Street Bridge. We kind of come up with a game plan, a little communication with the Corps, how they'd like to see that taken care of. So earlier this week, we had gardener excavating. They went in and kind of dug out the affected area and re-compacted kind of the immediate dam, and then put some geotextile fabric and some riprap over the top of that. So shore it back up. We should be in good shape there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Counsel Grealish, I mean Counsel Veho and Counsel Grealish?
Talking to the old timers up in the center area, they're saying that peak runoff is going to be within the next two weeks. Is that about right?
Well, it's going to depend temperature variance. You know, we've got obviously a huge amount of snow up in the mountains left to come out. I think it's realistically, it's probably going to be somewhere between probably the 5th to the 10th of June. And that's kind of what a lot of expectations are at this point. There was some talk about, you know, 1st of June, you know, tail end of May, 1st of June. But I think it'll probably push out just based off the weather forecasts. And that's what some people are starting to think now, so.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Counsel Grealish?
I had an opportunity to speak with the city manager about this also. And is there enough diversions out there if it starts getting a little high, where we can divert some of this water?
You know, they'll push what they can for some of the diversion ditches and stuff. There are some diversions that, in a phone conference yesterday, that is blocked up west of town just a little bit. But they say that's a good thing, because that'll actually, there's some debris flow that's caught in there. So it'll, as that water level comes, that's automatically going to start diverting some of that water, and which is going to be a benefit to the city as far as that goes.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff comments?
Yes, Jim has an update for you.
Okay.
As you know, we've stopped putting things on your agenda when it doesn't technically need council approval. But instead, we still want to report out when we're taking care of these capital projects.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Last year, council approved a $90,000 CIP budget item to extend our current fiber from the cemetery building to the recycling center and then on to the wastewater treatment plant. As an update, we ran an RFP. We had four responding companies. The bids came in respectively at $250,000, $202,000, $115,000, and bonfire engineering came in at $61,000. After vetting bonfire engineering's response, we awarded the bid, and our work will begin on that shortly. So we came in under budget by $29,000. And we saw things as high as $250,000 for the same job. So it was quite a range there for us. Additionally, last year, you also approved a $100,000 CIP budget to replace our citywide telephone system. We ran an RFP on this as well. We had four responding companies again, seems to be a magic number. One company was disqualified because the system they proposed didn't meet our requirements. The other three came in at $200,000, $132,000, and High Country Workplace came in at $95,000. We vetted the company again and awarded them the bid at $95,000, $5,000 underneath our budget. The new system is already in place and functioning. We are continuing to refine that system.
Good job. Good job. Counsel Brawls, I believe, Counsel Brawls has a question for you.
Out of curiosity, what do you think the fiber bids were so far apart?
I think that fiber is a very hot topic. And depending on the company, they're looking, some companies are more experienced with laying fiber. Other companies may be more inclined to just do underground work, not necessarily fiber work, and they tend to bid higher.
What's the approximate distance of that?
About a mile and a half. Two, it's three locations. It's a mile and a half long. They have to bore under any streets. They have to do city permitting as if, as any other company would have to do. So, and they have to carry that insurance.
Do they, do they give a performance bond?
No, they do not.
So what happens if they have a cost overrun?
I, we have never had to have it. I don't know how to answer that question. They would have to put in a change order and request that.
Well, their contract requires them to put in the fiber for the cost that they bid. So they eat it if they have a cost overrun.
And it's not accepted until we test the system, make sure it's working. So they're not going to be paid out until that time.
If they can afford to loss. I don't know their financials, so, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Okay, Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few business updates. In case you haven't seen on social media or the newspaper, The Bistro has been purchased by the Center for Restorative Programs. So they are moving into that. And just today, I think their building that they're moving out of went on the market. So it's kind of a net zero. So they're staying in the downtown and we're keeping an employment center downtown. And they're getting the room that they need. But it's not a restaurant or anything like that. And so I know some people, when they, when The Bistro closed, were hoping something like that would go in. I do know that they've talked that it might be more square footage than they need. And so once everything gets settled over the next year, they may have a space to lease out. So there still could be some other uses that come in there. The other piece of information I wanted to share is the two Lamplighter hotels have been purchased. We received a call that we needed to remove our art piece because they were starting immediately the exterior work at the Lamplighter here at the corner of Hunt, of removing rocks and those types of things. And they did not want to damage the art piece. And so we're excited. There's, looks like there's going to be some improvements made and a facelift given to it. Our understanding is that location will still function as a hotel. The other location may be transitioned into long-term rentals in regards to sometimes when we have doctors or ASU, TSJC needs and those types of things. So just some changing of hands going on there, and then some interest being shown in some of these key properties. So I wanted to share that with counsel.
That's really good news, Heather. Thank you for sharing that with us. All right. Okay, if there are no other staff announcements?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to remind you, we do have the CML Executive Director here next week. If you registered for that on the 20th at 10:00 AM, doing the listening tour. And then before our next regular meeting, we do have you scheduled for two work sessions to do interviews for the Homeless Coalition and then this new UDC code discussion. So look for those work sessions to come.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, under the Local Liquor License Authority action, we have a consent item. Counselor Veho?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
Okay. We have a-
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right. If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Under item B of the agenda, we have the Local Liquor Licensing Item Needs and Desires Hearing on the Application of the Smoothie Juice Bar. Is that Eric or Ms. Holly?
That'll be me, Mayor, to conduct the hearing. So if you're ready to do that, we'll open the public hearing. And I will just lay out for the applicant the structure of that. The applicant will come up and present evidence of the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood concerning the issuance of this liquor, or proposed liquor license for the Smoothie's Juice Bar. And then if they have, I will ask if there's anybody to speak in favor of the issuance of that license as part of the public hearing. And then those speaking opposed, I'll ask to speak. And counsel, of course, may direct questions to the applicant after their presentation is done, before we engage in the further public hearing. And then at the close of public hearing, it will go back to counsel for consideration. Typically now, your, I would say, new practice, but it's not really new anymore, is if there's a clear-cut feeling amongst counsel to then make your decision and direct me to provide you with proposed written findings consistent with that decision at your next meeting for adoption. That way, the applicant knows what the result will be.
Okay. Thank you very much, Eric. So at this time, it's all yours.
Okay, great. So at this time, we'll have the representatives of Smoothie's Juice Bar come and present their evidence. And go ahead and please state your name and your position with Smoothie's Juice Bar.
My name's Donna Chapel.
My name's Dave Chapel.
And we're the owners of Smoothie's Juice Bar.
So go ahead.
Well, we've been in business for six years. It'll be six years in June. And it was a ground-up, start, family-owned business that we've worked very hard to do. We thought about the alcohol in the very beginning, but we knew that we needed to perfect what we were doing first. So we gave it some time, and we feel like that, we feel like now is the time. We've got, we've got a great following. In fact, several in the room, that I'm proud to say. But it's just been something that has evolved, that we feel like would be a benefit to, to the community from all ages. I mean, it's a family-owned business. It's family-friendly. Nothing will change as far as appearance or changing anything about us, other than I have groups of older women that come in on a weekly basis that, that show interest and have a desire to say, "We would love to come in and have our Spanish group on Tuesdays and be able to maybe just have a drink, or a glass of wine, or maybe a beer." So I'm listening to what our community is saying. And it's been, it's been asked many times. So we would like to apply for that and serve our community, as well as still offer a safe place for the college kids, because you know the college kids are going to drink when they're 21. I mean, that's just how it is. We're not going to encourage that to be like overrunning anything. But it's actually a safer place for them. It's a place they can stay for a little while. They're not, it's just low-key, that we feel like it would benefit the younger as the older.
Well, it just gives it a clean atmosphere for the students to come in. And they can study as long as they want. They don't have to, they don't have to necessarily even buy anything. But if I was a parent and I had a student going off to college, I'd rather him be in a nice, safe place to have a drink in a non-bar atmosphere, be able to study and, and talk with their friends and use Wi-Fi and watch the television. But it just gives an alternative to a bar-type atmosphere. So, yeah, it just seems to be a win-win and for the, for the city as well. It just seems to be a good asset. So that's how we see it. But I don't know how you might see it.
Have you posted the notice of the hearing that's being held tonight at the businesses?
Yes.
And do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Okay, let's bring that up, and we'll mark that as Exhibit A. And then Holly, I assume that the newspaper publication took place appropriately?
And then we also do have a-
The signatures.
Yeah, signatures of a couple hundred people that have signed a proposal to kind of back us.
Could you read what the statement on the signatures? I mean, is there a statement that says something, and then people signed it?
Yes.
So what is that statement?
It's on my register at the shop. I forgot that. It's taped on the register. And we just, we just print it out. If you would be interested in supporting us getting our liquor license, would you sign our petition?
Okay, so you had that posted on your, your register at the shop, and then people signed these petition pages that you're presenting tonight?
Yes.
And we'll mark that as Exhibit B. And go ahead and bring it to counsel. They'll pass it through. And you said a couple hundred. Do you know how many signatures there are?
I think there's 196. I wrote it at the top.
I'm assuming you didn't limit the people who could sign to people who were city residents? These are just people who were in your shop and expressed an interest? Is that right?
Most of them were in this, within the City of Alamosa. But I did have a few people that travel from Pueblo and Springs. This is their first stop. The juice bar is their first stop before they go to where they're going. And they asked if they could. They said, "We would love to have our names on this." So I let them.
Counsel, did you have any questions for the applicants?
Counsel Grealish and then Counsel Veho.
I had a question, Donna. Why, why did you apply for a tavern license versus maybe, are you going to still have your restaurant there? Will you just sell food there?
Yes, we will. And we went with a tavern license because the restaurant and hotel license required a 20% food sale.
Okay.
They required that, or, or they could revoke your license, is how I understood it. As a tavern license, you can do, offer finger food. And there was no, there were no stipulations on that. And that's what we do anyway. We have wraps and sandwiches, and that's basically what we do anyway. So that's why.
But we are also going to, going to beef up our menu for, we're going to stay up in later hours and offer a dinner and about three other items that we can perfect to have more meals. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You said you've been in business for six years. You've been at the same place for six years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Brawls?
How many juice bars and other juice bars have liquor licenses?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How many other juice bars in Colorado have liquor licenses?
Very rare. In fact, we looked up the, there might be a couple in Denver, but we did find one in London, England, that was, yes. So it's a real rare thing. And to actually add the alcohol with the healthy drinks, then it's, and they are quite good.
I found that odd to have a healthy juice bar with, with liquor.
Yes.
And when we were looking up to find out whoever else did it, their comment was to take away some of the guilt of having a drink after work because you're still getting your greens or your fruit. I thought that was a little funny.
For the normal person, it reduces the sugar just completely compared to a rum and coke with eight or 16 teaspoons of sugar compared to the different bases that we use. So it is a lot healthier of a, of a drink to have if you're going to- So it is a lot healthier of a, of a drink to have if you're going to add alcohol, so, uh, yeah. It's just better for the consumer. It does add a lot to the, you know, there's not a lot of places that you can do this, so it's kind of a one-off thing. It's not something you could go in the phone book and find. Yeah, it's very rare, yeah. So I think the city of Alamosa is lucky.
So, so do you think a hundred and ninety-six signatures out of a population of ten thousand is, represents a valid need?
I think once they actually see and come in and experience and see the cleanliness of what we offer. But it takes consistency. It's not easy to, to be consistent on these kinds of things and offer a good service. So all of our businesses repeat customers. We have people that travel from Salida just to come here, just to our Juice Bar. So, yeah, it's pretty rare, but you have to be consistent, you know, so we realize that, you know, what we have to accomplish.
And also, um, on that note, I also have a drive-through that the people that went through the drive-through didn't have the opportunity to sign, to sign the petition. So the signatures I got were just the walk-ins. So I'm sure it probably, and this is no kidding, probably would have doubled had I had one at the drive-through as well. But we're not going to be able to sell through the drive-through.
No, no alcohol.
It would be a walk-in only.
Well, I see a lot of places like Crestone, Del Norte, um, Sanford, which is not in Alamosa. So a lot of these signatures aren't even residents of Alamosa. So you still think that that's, there's a need?
Actually, I do. I do, because like I'm saying, my drive-through is probably seventy-five to eighty percent of, well, sixty-five to seventy percent of my business.
And the college students that we talk to, you know, we've talked to a lot of them. They don't like to go to the normal bar and, and places to have a drink. This is kind of an alternative to where it's real safe, and not that bars are unsafe, of course, they're the same. But, uh, if I was a parent sending my kid off to school, I would rather them be in a nice establishment like this than to be at a, some kind of other bar-type place. And they can study and it seems to be that, that it's pretty popular.
Yeah, my concern is, you know, this, this now brings us up to how many? Forty-three, forty-four liquor establishments in Alamosa? And for a population this size, I'm concerned about.
But how many offer what we do as far as the studying and the place to be in a safe environment and watch television? You know, most of these places you can go to anywhere in town and get a, a beer and, and anything you like to drink, but they're all the same. We offer something that's so unique that there's really no, there are places that exists that we can find even on the internet. So we feel that we're just offering a service that, uh, that just anyone can come in and not, not, uh, be in a bar-type atmosphere, yeah.
Counsel, if you have discussion amongst yourselves, that, that would be best done when it comes back to you after you've received all the public comments. So this is really for questions of the, of the applicants.
Thank you very much.
Okay, counsel.
Um, so, are you, so will you be provi- if you were to get the license, would you be providing some drinks where it would have, um, the fruit, the smoothie with some alcohol?
Sure, that's exactly the intention.
So I think that does sound like something that's very different and interesting. And then the other question I have is obviously you're next door, kind of connected with Papa Murphy's there.
Yes, yes.
Do they have any comments or anything about this?
When I approached him about it, because he, he owns the building.
Uh-huh.
So when I approached him with that, he was all for it.
Okay.
He said he thought it would be great for both businesses. He was excited about it.
Real positive.
Both businesses, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Thank you. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to make any public comment in favor of the issuance of this license? It would not appear so. Is there anybody who would wish to make a public comment opposed the, to the issuance of this license? And a similar result for that. So counsel, it's back to you for deliberation unless anybody has further questions of the applicants.
Counsel ViHill?
One more question, please. Um, if you were to get this license, can you talk a little bit about the training you would provide your workers about carding and that type of stuff?
Certainly. In fact, we're going through that right now, just on ourselves, just to know. Everywhere we go, we ask what people look for and, and we have a special, a special, uh, tag on our cups that are bright orange, that no cup can leave the building, and they won't have lids on them. Uh, yeah, we're going through quite a process just to make sure that, and who's ever on duty that time has got to regulate that drink on every individual, yeah. So it's pretty, we realize what, what the implications could be if we did the wrong thing.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Grego.
Good. Sounds like, is it, was that a question you had, Counsel Grego? Oh, sorry.
Yes, yes. Yes, I, uh, kind of following, uh, Counsel ViHill's, uh, comment. There's a program out there, uh, is it called Tips? Where they teach you, it's a training for your bartenders and your stuff. And we highly recommend, uh, to people that come with applications to look into that and if they follow through with it. And that's something that maybe, I don't know if you answered, Greg.
We definitely look into that, yes, because anything, any information we could find, yes, we definitely do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Eric, it's back to you.
Very good. I think there's no further comments, so we'll close the public hearing and counsel, return it to you for your deliber- deliberation.
Okay, counsel. Any comments? Okay, Counsel ViHill?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, so this business has been around for six years in that location. Obviously, they've been doing a good job. They have, they've built a customer base. They feel like they're ready now to offer this service. I do like the idea that it's, it's a very unique type of situation. Like you, Mr. Brawls, I also had the same question. A health place, kind of juice, juice bar, and then offer a beer on the side. I didn't understand, but listening more to them tonight, I think, I think it is a, a unique draw for our town and I, I, if, I would be in favor of granting this, um, license.
Okay, Counsel Hesley?
So I agree. I have to tell you, I, I think it sounds pretty appealing. Um, but I do think, also I've seen how hard they've worked. I know we've worked on projects together, um, building that customer base and doing it very conscientiously and very deliberately and figuring out, taking each of those steps, and I've seen them from day one and how you've grown your business. And that idea of doing it in a responsible way, a way that is benefits you, obviously, as a business owner, but also benefits our community, and I definitely know how much the college students mean to you. Obviously, you use a lot of them for employees, a lot of them come in there. Um, so I think this is something new and different, and in talking to the college students, a lot of them, there's not a whole lot of options of things to do, and that is something we consistently talk about. And so what I do think this is, this is another option, not just for college students, but like you say, even small groups that come in, um, whether, uh, you know, for little meetings, things like that. But I think it does give another option that we really don't offer here, so I would also be in support.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate that.
Counsel Grego?
In, with both of you guys talking in support, are, are we talking about making something to deny? Some kind of, or are we going to go through the pros and cons of, uh, of the license and then make a decision then?
Well, like, like, uh, Mr. Eric said, if there's enough favor, he'll come up with, um, arguments for.
Right, so long ago, I used to, you, you had your debates and I would prepare, uh, proposed findings granting the license and proposed findings denying the license. And you would discuss it and the, and the applicant wouldn't know anything until two weeks or a month after their presentation. And typically, uh, counsel had a fairly clear idea right after the hearing about how they wanted to go. So your, your practice now is to direct me to prepare findings based on the evidence that was presented consistent with a decision that you will make now to either grant or to deny. Now, of course, you could, you could also decide that you're not ready to make that decision, and I'm happy to prepare findings going both ways that you can talk about further at your next meeting.
Okay, so Counsel Grego?
Well, I guess, uh, as Counsel ViHill, uh, mentioned, that you've been at this for six years, you know, and I know, being in business, that if you can move on, if the license could be granted tonight, it would help you because if you have to wait another month or whatever, I know it takes, it takes from the, the monies that are, you're ready to come in. So, uh, I would make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, grant the license tonight and, uh, allow Eric to do his findings in favor of the license.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, Counsel Brawl?
Well, I'm just, again, I'm, I'm concerned about the number of liquor licenses in Alamosa. They keep increasing. And a tavern license is pretty, pretty serious, I think. And, uh, I don't know, you know, I understand and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying this against the individuals. You're great people. It's strictly, uh, look at the liquor. And, uh, you know, I guess I'm still in my, my mind that a hundred and ninety-six signatures, to me, does not represent a need. I'd like to see five, six hundred signatures, but that, that's my, uh, my feeling.
Okay, thank you. I too would be in favor of this. I, I've been doing you all since you've been in business and you've been doing a great job in the community, and I, uh, wish you much success in this new endeavor of your business, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right, counsel, start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried four to one with Counsel Brawls casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, final, uh, counsel, we have a counsel comment and just want to remind you on those comments, we still have an executive session ahead of us, so, um-
Mayor, can you maybe, uh, tell the applicants what had just happened? Because they, they got this little-
So, so we, this isn't the actual granting of the license. They've directed the city attorney to do the findings of fact in support of it. So at the next city council meeting, then they will officially vote on that and you'll continue working with the city clerk on getting your license.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Counsel Grego, and thank you, Heather. Okay, counsel comments?
I got one. Uh, Mayor, with all the proclamations that we had this week, one that wasn't mentioned, but, you know, it was, last week was, uh, Nurses Week as well as Teacher Appreciation Week. So all the nurses and teachers in our world, in our country, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel ViHill. Okay, all right. Um, looks like, uh, we're about to go into executive session. Um, I did see, um, Judge McDonald out there in the audience, and I just want to recognize and tell you hi and thank you for coming out here tonight. Okay, so, executive session.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session, uh, to personnel, for Personnel Matters, Evaluation of the City Clerk Third Meeting, Evaluation of the Municipal Judge First Meeting, and the Evaluation of City Manager Second Meeting, Council Discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we will be entering into executive session, um, and no further business will be discussed after the executive session.